Hi, this is the regular monthly meeting of the Dighton Open Space Committee. This meeting is being recorded for posting on the Dighton YouTube channel and on cable access. Call stand for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first meeting of the committee in some time. We have two new members, so we're at right now three. So I think probably the first agenda item is just selecting officers.
Sure.
I don't know if anybody is particularly interested. I think, you know, obviously we need a chairperson. I think it would be a good idea to have a clerk only. Whether that person is the person who takes minutes or not is the upperest question.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't mind helping out in that respect, but at least that's somebody to run the meetings in the absence of a chairperson.
Sure. Well, I would nominate you for chair.
Chair, okay, alright. Anybody else interested?
I agree with that.
No, okay. So, a motion?
I'd put a motion on the floor to nominate Danny Gens as chair of the Open Space Committee.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Would anybody like to be the clerk? And I will say, I don't mind taking minutes because I used to just watch the video afterwards. I used to have to take minutes, so it's not a... That's my biggest fear.
I'll do it unless you want to do it.
So what would clerk entail? Would that be who would post agendas and...
That would be the chairperson.
The chairperson.
So, really, it's, since I don't mind taking minutes, it would be just run in any of my absence.
I mean, if you're interested.
You can do it. I have a fella.
Okay, I'll do it.
But is there a motion, is a call stand for the clerk?
I made that motion.
Uh, I stepped down a second. All in favor? Aye, thank you, congratulations. So, the next agenda item is, we did receive a application from Jonathan Gale to join the Open Space Committee. I believe I forwarded you a copy of his resume?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But Jonathan, I don't know if you want to tell us why you're interested and a little bit about yourself.
Sure. So I am Jonathan Gale. I've been a resident of the town come this October 31st for seven years. I am the ATA coordinator for the town. I also serve on the Sony Court of Appeals as their clerk. I am totally blind. I have had an ovation for 35 years. A lot of the work that I do in my private work center is around disability policy and law, procedure, reasonable combinations and disclosure. I have been involved in working with 40B housing for several years on programs that bring folks into the program and helping folks determine whether they meet the criteria to be qualified for the 40B process or not, whether they're families, singles, condominium, single family, whatever. I came into the town through the 40B process myself. And I say that because of a number of things. One, I'm obviously a person with a disability and as the ATA coordinator, I look at a town as well and things that I do with communities and look at open spaces and say, okay, what can we put here potentially for people with disability in terms of affordable housing and resources or expanding open spaces, trails, parks, things like that? So, part of my impetus for wanting to do this was to look at how open space in our community can be used for our residents and friends who have different disabilities and how we can make the areas that we have that are open space more friendly and what we can look at for grants. I do a lot of grant work as well and I hope that maybe that would be useful to look at things of that nature, to see if there's resources out there, public or private partnerships, for either purchasing open space or redeveloping open spaces in different ways and working with some of our residents on some of the land that they currently have now and see if there's ways that we can talk to residents about leaving a trust for the town as to be left developed in certain ways or in some cases even undeveloped. So, I look at that. I also, as I said, I look at the housing component. And I know that, you know, I've done some work with CERPA before and the last report that we had to submit several years ago. I know that we're way under in terms of meeting that 10%. Well, if anything, we've gone backwards. We're probably below 4% now. And I look at how we can identify small parcels of open space for clusters of duplexes, which is the new wave of a lot of developers to look at smaller clusters that with smaller spaces on some of the land they might be holding or land that the town can purchase for developers to build on, things like that too. So, those are just, you know, kind of all over the place, but I'm trying to give you a sense of what I envision as well. As a member of the CPC as well, which I'm on, there may be ways that CPC and open space can work together to define some historical land in town that's either worth preserving the way it is or perhaps redoing so we can keep the historical value to it. It could be an old building, could be a reservation area, could be simply a bench that's in a public area. But I think it's worth looking at all of that. And I know open space hasn't been able to meet for quite a while and there's a lot of work to be done, so I'm hoping that I can be part of that.
Sounds great to me.
That's my shortings. I think it'd be a great asset.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah.
I think a lot of things you brought up play into our next agenda item, which is priorities in the agenda for the committee. So, some of the things that you mentioned that you were speaking broadly, I think some come up maybe far outside the scope of open space in particular, although you were speaking broadly about your experience with the town and what you want to do for the town. But I do agree it'd be a great asset for the town. Does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion that we recommend to the board to select them to appoint Jonathan Gale as a member of Open Space?
Sure, I'll make that motion that we appoint Jonathan Gale as a member of Open Space.
Have a second? Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, motion approved, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll send it off to the select board to let them know.
Next meeting.
Make a motion.
Yep.
And in the final, and I did just want to comment at the beginning, I do have, this will be true, I think for all of our meetings, which is, I, to be present, will need to keep it to an hour or less for each meeting if there's another meeting after this.
Yep.
Obviously, if I do have to excuse myself, we have a forum and I think if I want to take over and continue, but just as a heads up. But I just wanted to talk in general what people's thoughts were about priorities for the coming year. I had two in mind in particular. One is Dan Dainal in your role on CERPA has been formulating best practices guidelines for towns in respect to conservation subdivisions, which, you know, I think it's appropriate for this committee to be able to weigh in on. It's also appropriate for the planning board and for the other committees as well, but certainly, you know, the open space component of that in particular, how it's determined, how it's utilized, what requirements were around it. You know, I would really like to be able to dig into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I've had a little bit of conversation with the town already in general for the bylaw and one of the things that they are interested in is ensuring that the open space that's designated as part of the conservation subdivision is like usable open space that provides value to the community, to the community. So I think that this committee would be great to advise on how to set that up.
I did also kind of just as a way of getting ahead of it and understanding, because I know what you're coming up with is kind of, I wouldn't say it's generic, but it's for any town, perhaps, you know, it depends upon town size, but for any given town, a particular, you know, size and one of the best practices. So I did ask the board assessors for a list of all the properties in town that are 40 acres or greater. I know that you could probably do developments on something small than 40 acres, but it's still quite a long list. So that when we're talking about that, when we get to that point, I'd like to be thinking about particular properties in town.
Yeah.
How would it work in Dighton in particular, knowing what we have available for potential stock for a conservation subdivision if someone were to pursue that rather than any given time? And maybe figure out like, how does it get tweaked a little bit to be more Dighton specific? If possible, because you know what we're working with, you know, it's a limited subset of properties and stuff.
Yeah, I think that would be very valuable to the town to do that level of planning and also to think about like what open space parcels are and come up with some sort of like priority list where the top priorities are for conserving. Like having that list ready to go would be very beneficial. So then whenever properties come up, whether it's for conservation subdivision or anything else like chapter lands that are being sold and the town has right of first refusal, like having a list where, oh, like that property is on our list, like we know we want to move on it, so.
So you have to sign it at that moment? Oh, this just came up here for the use of this.
Yeah, yeah, to decide this, yeah.
We already know the plans we wanted, if it ever came up, stuff. What is the progress with, I know you said you shared it with some people in the town already, probably like one being one of them, but what's the, is that something we could review at our next meeting that forward along?
Um, yeah, so I could, I could kind of like present a summary of the analysis we did. So I can just make sure everybody's aware of the project. What CERPA did is, we did a regional review of all 27 communities that are in CERPA's region, so including Dighton being one of them. We looked at every town zoning bylaws and looked for any sections of the zoning bylaw that regulate, and any type of, like for Dighton, it's called conservation subdivision. Some towns call it open space residential design. Some towns call it natural resource protection zoning. But what it is, it's any type of subdivision development that requires open space conservation. So it enables the, you would take the same number of lots that you would generally build in a subdivision, it allows for smaller lot sizes so that those lots can be concentrated on a smaller parcel, on a smaller subset of the land and then the rest of the land gets set aside as open space. So we looked at every town, any bylaw that had some sort of that bylaw and we did an analysis. We actually used a tool that Mass Auto has that's based on like sustainable development practices, so how to just develop more mindfully and use more low-impact development. So we used that tool that was specifically for analyzing these types of bylaws that compares the town's, what is in the local bylaw with what like the recommended best practice is. And it's based largely on the state has a model bylaw that's based on. So we pretty much went through every town in the region, looked at their bylaws and how they compare to like that model bylaw. And then we met with any town that was willing to meet with us. So Dighton was one of the towns that we managed to meet with the town staff. If they have a bylaw, how is that bylaw working for the town? Is it being utilized? If they don't have a bylaw, why don't they have a bylaw? Like what is preventing you from adopting it? And then we also met with developers to understand how open space development works for them. Is it, do they prefer to use it? A lot of developers said that it saves them money because they have to build fewer roads, so it just saves money on development. So a lot of developers are interested that way. But we, the idea is to like get a sense of what works for the towns, what works for developers so that we can recommend best practices that kind of meet both needs so that the towns can encourage more development that preserves valuable open space, but also keeping in mind that we need to make the permitting structure like attainable for developers and make it worth their while if they would want to go after it. So that's kind of what the goal of the project is. As part of this project, we're also working specifically with Dighton and one other community to rewrite their current bylaws. So we're going to be working with the town to rewrite the conservation subdivision bylaw based on our analysis. So we're at the point where we just finished our analysis and I'm finalizing the summary of everything we learned and then we're going to share that back out with the towns. Like, okay, this is what we took away. These are what like the quote-unquote best practices are there or recommended practices. And then we'll be working with Dighton. So I'll be reaching out to the town again sometime in the fall to talk about next steps for Dighton's bylaw specifically. And I'll definitely want to be meeting with like different boards in town, like especially the planning board. This group was on my radar to meet with anyway, now I'm here, so, but I can meet about it anyway. Yeah.
Can I ask a question or not?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I understand I'm allowed to do this.
No, just.
Okay.
Oh, it's quiet up there.
So my question is that in general, and I'm going to go back to what you were saying a little bit about working with developers and so forth and identifying the space. So I know first in the development that I'm in, which was a 40B project, 60 homes, 25 or 40B, there is, it was designed with open space in mind. So there is an open space area within that, which I think serves.
Was it done under the conservation subdivision?
That I don't.
Or just like, we need open space?
I think it was designed, we need open space, more so, to be honest with you.
Excuse me, Jonathan. It was part of the 40B project that we, in exchange for small lots, we wanted a certain amount of open space.
I'm sorry. No, that's okay, because that's answered better than I could, so. But what I'm wondering is, when you look at these spaces and you look at the open space that should be kept or we're trying to keep, for example, and you look at a smaller footprint for smaller lot sizes, whether they're 20,000 feet, 30,000 foot lot sizes, whatever they might be, does any of that allow you to account for any of the other things in town for services and resources that could come under purview with developers as well for the discussion with the public at large, police, fire, schools, things like that and the impact that can have or not? I'm just curious how that, how that all comes together because of the state's rules and the criteria for meeting the thresholds.
Yes, is that exclusive of the thing of 40B or if it were 40B or if it doesn't?
Maybe it doesn't have to be exclusive, and I guess that's what I'm wondering, how you look at that.
So if it was not a 40B, then, and you may know better than I, but I think it's, that's more a planning board question. The planning board does have the ability to take into account in their approval process impact of the town, including schools, infrastructure, you know, town services like police, fire, et cetera. It's a factor that they're allowed to account for. This is outside of the 40Bs and 40Bs probably, you know, because you can't account that.
You can't count that.
But yeah, the planning board is allowed to factor that in under our current bylaws. Whether conservation subdivision versus a regular subdivision, that plays out differently?
And that's what I'm wondering if, if it can play out differently with the conservation stuff.
I can't, that I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it all depends how you write the bylaw. Generally, and I, I would, my guess is this is the case for Dighton's, but not having it in front of me or having reviewed it recently, I'm not 100% certain. But generally, like the other regulations around development are the same. The only thing that changes is, well, I mean, whatever you explicitly say in the bylaw, like for these areas, this is what's allowed, everything else would generally remain the same. So it's usually only the changes are like in lot size and the how the site plans are set up, like things like that. So normally what you were saying, Jonathan, wouldn't be addressed in a conservation subdivision bylaw. It would be kind of as what generally would apply in that zoning district, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
So this is just one thing, priorities, anyone else, that we had to be talking about, it's an interesting topic.
Well, back to the lot size. One of the things that we have serious issues with is water and sewer. So any of these subdivisions, in order to decrease the lot size, would have to have one or both of those just to not even keep it legal, just to keep it functional. So have you guys suggested a lot size yet?
We haven't gotten that far yet. Honestly, the way Dighton's, I do remember this, that Dighton's current, the minimum lot size, I think, is 7,500. That might be under the condition that there's water and sewer.
Right.
But I remember that Dighton's sizes were pretty in line with, like, I don't know if I would recommend going much smaller. They seem to be in line with what like the better practices are.
Right. In the 40B subdivisions, the, some of the lot sizes, Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, were 3,000 square feet, not 3,000, 4,000.
Well, for example, right, so in the newer developments and some of the smaller, so in the development that I'm in, the average is between 30,000 and 40,000.
Right.
So that's where I, but that's also large. Some of the other ones, for example, the one across the street here, I think it's, that footprint is more like about 20,000, 18,000. But then there are others that haven't started yet where the footprint comes down to about 13,000.
Right.
That are still, no shovel in the ground, it'll be a while yet.
And a conservation subdivision currently is easier and below that, so it's, like we said, it's like 7,500 with water and sewer, maybe a little bit higher if you have to plant the water.
The other, the other side to that is when you talk about the 40B part of it, and I don't know if this comes into conservation as well. Some of the 40B are opposed, for example, as two places are quote-unquote row houses of form. So in some of the current development plans that are out there that are going through the process now. So, I don't know what the, you know, you may have four in a total of 12,000 feet. That was square foot, so, you know, that's, that we're in lies, if you will, Peter, you're talking about the 3,000 or 4,000.
Right.
And that's how you could get that kind of formula.
Okay. Do we need a mission statement?
Most of the committees in town support and, what is left back request that they create mission statements.
Okay.
So maybe our next agenda would.
Sure.
Just on this same topic though, obviously one of the things that this thing would play, makes us a lot of wetlands. Does that play into this in any significant way that changes it in how we look at it or not really? It's just that, that's by definition mostly conservation land cannot be used for anything other. So it just, it's a factor in the, in the lot, but not in any, not necessarily in how you approach the bylaw.
Yeah, a lot of towns will include, a lot of towns, or some towns address wetlands by, they'll require like a minimum, let's say 20% of the parcel has to be dedicated for open space. But then within that 20%, not more than like half of it can be wetlands. Because they want it to, they want to ensure that the developers aren't just taking like the undevelopable land and designating as open space.
Right, it's coming towards open space.
Yeah, you want to, right, yeah. You want to have like meaningful, useful open space. So some towns do do that.
They use 25%, no more than 25% can be wetlands.
Yeah, so, and that's not a super high number, so I don't know if that would be a limitation. But, yeah.
So the 75% can would be left as open space untouchable or?
It could be used for trails.
Trails, okay.
And there's also a factor of, is it 75% contiguous open space? And I can forget what it is right now. I don't think the town bylaws right now say it has to be contiguous, but there are some definitions around how much of it has to be, you know, it can't be like 30 feet here and 50 feet there.
Yeah, I think it's like recommended that it would be contiguous, but that's an important part of it, making sure that it's valuable.
Yeah. And everybody says in there, it's valuable for the purposes of recreation, historic, you know, purposes, conservation, et cetera. It gives a list of why it's valuable, not just that it's open space.
Yeah.
So it has to also fit an additional criteria of being useful to the town, so, yeah.
Is there currently, I'm assuming there is somewhere, I know you mentioned the 40 acres, but is there currently a list of all of the open space that the town owns?
I'm sure the assessors always could provide it, yeah.
I think that would be a good idea.
I noticed there are several lots in that 40 acre list that I thought that the town does own.
The town's open space plan would have an inventory of all the, and that was done pretty recently, I think. Certainly did, it was before me, but I think they did it within the past like few years.
Yeah, I should actually get a piece of that for everybody. If you don't already have a copy, the most recent open space plan that the town did.
No, I don't. I think it would be good to have a copy of that to help, not just identify where it is, but how it can be potentially used or not.
It was done in conjunction with Parks and Rec, so it's a combined view, but I might get that copy, everybody.
That would be good to review like before the next meeting if we're setting a mission.
Yes. We just had six lots that we sold. Most of them, nothing appealing, but they all went at an auction.
Yeah.
And with the exception of, out of the six, I think four were unbuildable. So I don't know, I think it was neighbors who might have chipped in or buddies that purchased the land. But we had talked about leaving them on the tax, I mean, leaving them unavailable, but, you know, and probably rightly so, wanted the cash, so it didn't work as open space. But they, they might have been on that list.
Sure.
That's another reason why having a list of like our RV open space lands is important, because it's not feasible to just conserve like every parcel that comes up.
Right.
The town needs some income too, so having a list of those priorities can help make those decisions.
And a lot of the levels that you have to satisfy, so you just can't take it and hold forever.
And also where the, where it is, if it's in a industrial zone versus residential zone versus...
I think the six were in residential that we just discussed.
I think so too.
The other thing I have for priorities for this year was pursuing agricultural restrictions. Yes, there probably, there may be more than one, I think, that opened in the town that needed restriction. But, you know, and obviously that takes funding from the town as a partner with the state to do that. But the fact that we are a regular farming committee makes that easier than working with the state in terms of state's contribution. But that is something that has been raised at the CPC in the past about use of central funding to help the town buy agricultural restrictions so that parcel can only use for farming. But it would be an approaching, you know, people in town, seeing if they're interested in identifying properties in town. So it'd be some love in doing that and then figuring out what the process is so that we, if that's something you wish to pursue, that you had something on pre-ability to bring forward to the CPC that an actual person wanted to do it, what the funding request would be, what the timeline is, so that's what I, but that was my other top recommendation that we could talk about in the coming year.
Is there like an agricultural committee in town or any like regional groups?
There is an agricultural committee that only one member showed up for the last couple of meetings. I think there are nine people on it, but they, they really just don't do anything. I mean, I don't mean that way. I think when they were initially meeting, they, they had some teeth, so to speak, but I think lately that nobody who was on the committee has just shown an interest, with the exception of one person. And that was one of the select who was assigned to the committee.
I think they were really involved, going back two years ago when we did the community garden out here.
Right.
They were involved because they needed to use their funding to help support the community garden. But I think since then, it's been difficult.
Yeah.
But they don't have the funds to go buy agricultural donations that's for the CPC or the town itself, so, yeah.
Does the town own any farms or lease any farms or they don't part of the game?
Not that I'm aware of, no. As in about, not this previous, a different meeting that I wrote, the idea of the town leasing their property, that was brought up in that respect for commercial interests. They're just looking for piece of property if the town had such a property that met their requirements. But the town never intended to make the idea of leasing on property. So that's a, that's a different case altogether, but in terms of that case specifically on agriculture, I mean, it's an interesting idea. I don't know if it's the kind of thing that the town would wish to pursue or if they had the option to pursue. That would be a complete question, you know, the board's looking at that.
Does the town have the opportunity, and Peter, you might know more about this than CERPA, Does the town have the opportunity, and Peter, you might know more about this, certainly I'm never gonna know, but for the summer farms in town. Depending upon if they're twenty, twenty-five year leases, for example, does the town have the possibility to enter into negotiation for that order? To lease that parcel property after the twenty or twenty-five years, so that it can remain undeveloped or redeveloped through the town?
Yes, the, uh, uh, nobody's that old, obviously, and, um.
That's why they end up going forward.
Yes, uh, the first one that came on the books is still not, we started in two thousand eighteen, still hasn't gone live yet. So, uh, I don't think we exactly know what's gonna happen when these things are decommissioned.
Hmm.
But there are options for leasing of land, uh, decommissioning these, the the it's, there are laws now for when these things are no longer useful. But, um, I can't say for sure what the developers are going to wanna do, uh, either sell it back to the town or or have the ability to 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 lease it out. They, so far, the ones that are developing it wanna continue to run there, uh, but they haven't given us the what's gonna happen at a certain timeframe. They will probably lease it to somebody else.
And what about the space, um, it's a horrible thing to think about, with the hazardous waste site.
Yeah.
Um, you know, where.
Yeah.
Yes, um, I know that's probably years and years down the road.
Zeneca doesn't wanna touch it, because, uh, the the course is millions, uh, they actually wanna donate it to the town, which we don't want. We just had a study come in that talked to us, the selectmen, about, uh, projects.
That's right, yeah.
And one of them was Zeneca's building, Zeneca's land, and we just won't take it off the books, there there's nothing that's ever gonna happen with that. There's no incentive for them to spend the money to clean it up, it's not burning the town, other than it's an eyesore, uh, and we like to have that land developed for commercial use or open space. But as of right now, they they won't spend any, they won't spend the time to do anything, they don't own that dam that's there, and at one time they want to donate it to the town.
I remember that.
But we don't want that, because then we'd be responsible for repairs to the dam. So it it's basically less untouched, it's going to stay that way, until the federal government says, here's some funds to clean it up, or you have to clean it up. But it won't be on the town's dime.
Surpitt does have some, so we're doing like a regional brownfields study right now, we have a grant from EPA, that's, it's it's like a planning, so looking at, um.
Right, right.
Different sites and like planning for reuse or what the future renovation would look like, so.
Right.
I don't know how it would work if it's not like the town, I think you, I think it could be on privately owned property, but whether it's in this grant round or like a future project that is in like the surplus work program.
Right.
That maybe we could work with the town to provide funding to do some assessment or planning.
Yeah. The funding, which is so outrageous, uh, and Zeneca just, um, like I said, doesn't have an incentive to do anything, we've we've approached them many times.
Are they open to it, they just don't wanna pay for it?
They just don't wanna pay for it.
Yeah.
And and like I said, until somebody forces the hand, which it it won't be the selectmen, uh, it would have to be the federal government saying, you have to clean this up. But but there's nothing in the foreseeable future that that's going to, that's going to change. I don't know what kind of funds that you're talking about, but, uh, we're talking to hundreds of millions to to clean it up. Because the, and you can't disturb it, if once you stop to disturb it, you have to clean it the whole site, and, um. Uh, we we had even, not we, somebody hadn't even talked about putting a solar farm there, and, um, but just going in there would would be.
Yeah.
You you couldn't, you'd have to be surface mounted, it couldn't be, uh, just like the landfill.
Yeah.
They're gonna put a solar farmer on landfill, but.
They are, they they were.
They, no, they they are still, um, but it won't be, it'd be those posts that sit on top of the ground, it it, so it won't be penetrating the the landfill. I think we have a few more years of, um, monitoring the wells before they'll allow that to happen.
Were there other ideas that people thought, you know, in the next year that would be good priorities for this committee? Obviously, we don't have to decide tonight, I just, you know, this is probably the best time to start thinking ahead, so.
I think the, obviously, it's down the road, and not the next meeting, but I think down the road, to help to start to identify all the different potential funding sources. In town, state, or federal for purchases of land depending upon the the type of use. So that if land ever becomes available, that we don't currently have. If we have a list of potential funding sources for the type and use, at least we have a place to start.
So let me just ask, um, cause obviously, when you start saying something like that, there are the dinner bowls, why don't committee? Parks and Rec certainly, um, is a player, um, the, um, land use committee potentially, you know, is a player, um. So is that, that's the best way to coordinate that, so it's not gonna, you know, everybody's either stepping on each other's toes or applying to for elections and.
Everybody having the same goal in mind.
Right, everybody has the same goal in mind, but there's multiple committees involved in it.
Right.
Um, and open space in and of itself is a recommenda- recommending, recommending, oh, I think it provides recommendation without any teeth per se.
Right, right, yeah.
Unlike some other committees, but doesn't mean we can't do the labor, as Jonathan was just suggesting, it just means that at some point, it either gets handed off to or partnered with. Parks and Rec, for example.
Right. Somebody who's going to do something with the recommendation.
With the recommendation.
Yeah, ultimately, it may get withheld, if you will, by the town administrator.
Right.
Because chairpersons and members change on committees all the time.
Right.
But it would also have to be able to be updated regularly.
Yeah.
And, you know, that may take, once a year, each committee or something like that, doing something. But I think it doesn't hurt us to start working and reaching out to the other committees to see what they have, reaching out to the the different departments in town to see what they have in the books that we don't know about.
Now, this forty thousand, uh, forty acre lots that you have requested or suggested is, um. Is all buildable lots?
No.
Just open space?
I just asked for a list of parcels, forty acres or larger, and there's fifty some, like fifty-three, fifty-four parcels.
Do you have that many?
Yeah, and as I did, some are owned by the town.
Yeah.
Some, I mean, some are owned by the school district, that the school's there.
Right, yeah.
Um, the parcel, you know, Forest Hills.
Sure.
The state parcel was on there, um, if you look at them on a, um, the map with an overlay of wetlands, some of them are completely green.
One of them could not do anything with. Yeah.
So that was, you know, I wanted to like try to figure out like, and this was in respect primarily to conservation subdivision, but. Which of these are actually candidates?
Hmm.
By somebody someday, if they ever wanted to, um, perhaps somebody's already chopped up into, you know, pork chop lots, so they're really already restricted.
Right.
You just can't even open a map without doing the research.
Yeah.
And then, you know, figuring out like, if we ever, that one we ever developed, what would we want it to look like?
Right.
And can we craft language now, so that they help us, so that these things develop the way we wish?
Dan, let me ask, along with with that request, do you know if the town keeps a list of developers who are, who are currently holding on to land or land in trust for development? That they've held on to for years, for example, Stone Creek Trunks and Fisher Hatch and so forth.
And the I trust is a big one.
Right.
But I I don't know.
I don't know either.
I don't, I mean, it would be great to find out if we have a list of developers that are holding on to X number of acres as well.
I I don't think we would keep a current list, uh, out of, you know, the the list that even existed, uh, only because you get into private enterprises at that point, so.
You do.
If if a developer owned the land, that would be different, but for the town to, what, recommend a developer or?
No, 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 not, no, not, I don't mean recommend the developer, I mean, do we have a list of what developers own, what parcels currently?
Well, that would be on the tax rolls, I would, I would assume.
So on that forty acre list I had, I can, I I can bring it to the next meeting, and of course, share a product of that, it tells who the owner is.
Right.
And most of them are privately held.
Yeah, are, other than the ones that are owned by the town.
But the I trust films, quite a shit, Zeneca's on there, obviously, that's unbuildable, um, there are probably a handful of others, but. Eighty percent of all the lots identified are owned by individuals.
So they're on the tax rolls?
Yes, okay, yeah.
That's interesting. Are we allowed, Peter, do you know, um, this is kind of a slap to revenue, this comment?
Hmm.
Because I know, obviously, what the town needs is revenue.
Yeah.
But is the town allowed to offer any of these larger landowners, forty B, forty, sorry, forty acre plus landowners? Any kind of, when it pays, on an annual for somebody, your basis in return for leaving?
Leaving alone?
Yeah.
I I wouldn't think so.
Like the town or leaving it essays.
Uh, I don't think there's any incentive, I don't, and I wouldn't think the town would have the legal, um. You get into discrimination, uh, you're offering it to one person and not another person, so you'd have to really look at all the requirements before the town could start offering developers to leave them vacant. What would be the incentive, I guess, but then we would have open space, but, um. The developers wouldn't develop at that point if if they could get more money from the town not to develop. But I don't, I I don't think there'd be legal reasons why we couldn't, uh, couldn't do that.
I just, I didn't know if if we were to designate, you know, certain types of land as buildable versus non-buildable, or.
Well, we said we could do that, but I I guess I I don't know what you mean as far as incentive wise.
Is there any, is there any kind of a a tax break?
Tax break.
A tax rate that we can offer, we could could potentially, depending upon the type of land that would, that was defined and that would take a lot of work to do.
Well, there's a tax rate for land that's developed, as opposed to land that's that's just not developed.
But could we offer some kind of an annual abatement or something?
Uh, I don't know.
For, in effect, gifting down the road.
Right.
I know, the equivalent of an agricultural restriction.
Right.
You know, which has a very defined process for how you purchase it and what it means, the flip side of that, basically, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yes, I would take the board of assessors, would, how would be the first stop, yeah.
I'm just trying to throw out a.
Yeah, uh, no, I understand.
You know, certain for at least consideration, just to get it in in our hands.
Right.
Well, there are like the state tax programs, like chapter sixty-one, an owner, which is is through the state, if you, um. If the, if there's a forest one, um, an agriculture one, and a recreation one, that if your land is used for one of those purposes, and you commit to keeping it in that purpose. And not changing the land, then you get like a tax break.
And there's a timeframe, correct?
Ten years, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And if you don't use it.
And if you.
There's a penalty.
Yeah, so I think it's a minimum of ten years, and if you take it out of the program before then, then you have to pay back taxes.
Right, for five years.
And, yeah, and then, um, that's the one where, so after ten years, they can take it out of that land, they can also sell the land, and the restriction wouldn't carry over. But the town has the right of first refusal, where they could purchase the land and to prevent it from then being developed. And it's like the the town has the first say in yes or no, I'll buy it, but they have to pay like the, whatever the market prices for the land.
A premium, right.
So that's like an already existing, and I don't know if there's like a minimum lot size that it needs to be to afford that.
No, I don't think so. Uh, no, no, maybe there is, there might be a minimum lot size, but a certain amount of it has to be developable, for use of farm land. Right, yeah, you could have a couple of tomato plants and call it a farm.
Yeah, yeah, there are like set, set restrictions that the program would require, yeah, I'm I'm not sure what the specifics are.
Yeah.
Now, I know we're not anywhere near that at this point, far from it, but at least it's, it's something eventually to be able to get the information and have.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, we could like let landowners know that the program's available, or, or just the same way we can encourage like APRs.
So what kind of information do we wanna get out to the public then?
Like those kind of resources.
Right.
I guess for, I don't know, I mean, it's kind of hard, like we can identify priority lands, but if they're privately held, like who are we to go to the owner and be like?
Right.
Hey, but on the other side, if owners are interested, I don't know, like, you could do some sort of outreach, whether it's at like town events or something, just to be like, hey, these are programs that if you own land and you're interested in protecting your land, we can help. Do something like that.
Well, between now and next meeting, I can certainly try to reach out to the, um, board of assessors and try to build a list of all the, um, chapter land in town today. As well as, I guess, they would probably help us about which, if any, um, besides the one I'm aware of, there are agricultural restrictions on. Because, you know, in theory, the others are potentials, right, cultural restrictions, um, in terms of the other programs you mentioned, that would be, you know, continual outreach, but I can at least start it with that. And we can look at those at the next meeting.
Yeah, a lot of that would be identified in the open space plan too, in the inventory, um. Usually, I mean, I guess the assessor, the assessors would have the most current information, and I wonder if they would have information on agricultural properties. Even if like if they don't have an APR or.
I mean, if it's chapter sixty, you know, chapter, I should, so, could set it to a tax rate, so.
And I can, I can see several months down the road, envisioning, if nothing else, sending a mail around.
Hmm.
To, we'll use this, the forty acre landowners for now, with a cover letter, you know, the town has options if you're ever interested, kind of thing.
We talk, I'm good, I'm sorry.
And and putting different options in there, you know, if you will, brochures, letter, whatever it might be, that just explains the options, and if you're interested, who to contact, or the or assessors, the town administrator. Or whatever, there may be no bikes at all, and there may be no bikes for a year, two or three.
Yeah.
But if we did it annually, I don't know that we have a budget for that or anything either, but.
But we're talking about a newsletter going out, uh, to every household, um, sometime in the spring after the town election. So that way it's not, doesn't seem political, so it would be after the election sometime in April, the election's beginning of April, this mailing would go out sometime, uh, end of April.
So it'd be, this could be a print article.
So we could probably get some kind of article.
Yeah.
Um, shortly, sweet, to start the process.
Just to start the process.
Anything else that anybody would like to talk about this, if you think, that's about a part two first meeting, so.
When we're talking about meeting again, the first Monday of the month.
Yeah. Get that first Wednesday of the month. First Wednesday of the month.
Well, how about, how does that coincide with your other, your meetings at six thirty?
Mine except.
You're right, so Peter's around, is he?
Um, well, uh, the, we don't meet on the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
So the Wednesday, the first is is good for me, uh, does that work for everybody else like this?
It should work for me, for most of them. I think it works.
And the five thirty time works?
Yep.
Okay, so.
So you're free to ask so many questions.
That's fine, so I'm gonna make a motion for the next meeting to be November the first Wednesday, November would be.
November first.
November first, okay, November first, five thirty P M.
Right. I made that motion.
I got a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, if everyone wants into adjournment?
I made that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving in adjournment, thank you, Cable, uh, putting up with our first meeting.
Can I ask either of you, I know.